We got to start with calling the meeting in order. Okay, do we need to approve our agenda? I don't think yesterday. Agenda as printed. So we will get right into our first order of business and that's interviewing Mr. When you go like JR.
JR.
Wilson.
Yep.
So, okay, well, welcome and like I say, as you know, our interview in ten minutes for Richthood Taylor, a superintendent position. I hope you enjoyed getting to know our district a little bit with the meet and greets. We've allowed an hour and a half out for the interview.
Okay.
There really isn't anything stacking up behind us, so I don't have a real time crunch. Each of the team will, of the five of us board members, will ask you a series of three questions. We'll just rotate around. You do have the questions in front of you as well for your reference. So. Well, and we may have follow up questions to the questions, so. And we've also allowed ten minutes at the end of the interview for any other questions you might have about our school district area or anything like that, so. So first, I guess we'll just go around and do another quick introduction so you get everybody at the table. I'm Jody Huff, board president.
I'm Damian Wilson, board member.
Jesse Patterson, pre-K through floor principal.
Mr. Bobo, by two twelve principal.
Amber Barnes, business manager.
Dwayne's red board member.
Shannon gets board member.
John, John board member.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll roll right into it here. So please give us an overview of your professional experiences, your beliefs on public education, and why you are interested in being our superintendent.
Overview of my professional experiences. Well, I graduated from Dickinson State and then I got my masters from Cordia St. Paul. And then I taught in Arizona for a while and then spent four years in Jamestown teaching. And then I've been a seven twelve principal A D at Barnes County North for the last seven years. Two of those years I was K twelve principal, as far as that goes. Beliefs on public education, it's important. I think we're in a transition period on how to implement technology into the classrooms, especially with the A I, and then trying to maybe step back and how do we incorporate C T E courses to our students to get them ready for the workplace as those jobs are high paying jobs. They're usually in our communities to be able to get our students to stay in our community and have families that will result in more students attending our schools. Why I'm interested in being the superintendent here at Richthood Taylor, again, it's going to bring me back west, you know. I lived in Dickinson for thirteen years. My wife is from Dickinson. My daughters were born in Dickinson. It's a good area. I spent the last eleven years living in Jamestown and realize I'm a more of a western North Dakota person than an eastern North Dakota person. And prior to that, I'm familiar with the Richthood area, a few people that I went to college with, and then coaching in Bellfield, South Heart area, playing against Richthood Taylor in sports as well. And I'm more convinced now after touring the schools and seeing it or whatnot that it's, it's a great area. You guys got a lot of good things going here and there's potential for even more. So that, that's, that's a great plus and it's located in a great area and it's in a community. That's, that's a good thing because at my present school, we're not, we're in the middle of a cornfield. So it's, it's difficult to get that sense of community going into, into our school or whatnot. So, and I know there's a strong community support system between Taylor and Richthood as far as your extracurriculars are concerned. So that's a, that's a positive thing.
Yeah, thanks. Anybody have follow ups on that? Okay. All right. So based on what you know about our district, what do you, what do you view as our greatest opportunity for improvement?
From just conversations having or whatnot, I think the potential is of bringing the two communities a little closer, of getting them to view our students as our students, not just, well, I'm a Taylor person or I'm a Richthood person. But if we're all here, and I said this earlier to some staff, if we're all here for the right reasons, which is our students, then it doesn't matter. They're Richthood Taylor students and we're here to try and help them become as successful as possible. And that's just through that community support and having that, that experience in the Bellfield and South Heart area is quite something to, to see a little bit of that in the past as far as that goes. That from, that's what I would see as far as that goes.
Sure. A follow up on that, what, what you got in mind, what would be something that you try to do to bring about some of that unity, if you will?
Visibility, inconsistency. You know, as the superintendent, he gotta be out in front. He, he gotta be out there and visible in both communities and attending events and talking to people. Because the biggest part is, yeah, I'm going to be vested in the school while my kids are going to the school. But what happens when those kids are no longer in the school? Where does that community support go to? Are they still feeling welcomed or a part of it? Do they want to continue supporting the school system even though they have no more kids? You know, it's very, you get caught up in life. So how do you bring them together to get them to be interested in the school that, I don't have any kids, but we're going to go to the football game tonight to get that kind of support, the longevity of that.
So if selected as our next superintendent, how would you work with the board to establish a dynamic shared vision for education that reflects the students' needs and community priorities?
Having a lot of communication and having a discussion on what the goals are. What is the vision for the dis, by the school board members on where they see needs, where they want to see improvement, where they want to see the direction going? And then aligning that vision to what's in place and utilizing your administrative team to help mold that and guide it and direct it. But just having that continuous communication with them, getting their ideas, getting the input, getting you information when you have questions to provide that information. Because for the most part, board members aren't educational experts. So that's on me to help provide that information that's needed to make the best decision possible concerning our district.
Sure. All right, thank you.
The school board is committed to increasing student achievement through a rigorous curriculum and encouraging high status for all students. How would you communicate these expectations to parents, students, and staff?
Looking at either the strategic plan, the mission vision, anything that the district has and making sure that what we're doing is in alignment with that. And then using the data that's collected from any and all assessments to assess is the curriculum that we're using effective. If it's not, what are other options that we have? You know, looking at it budgetarily and going, what, what can we afford to do, what would we like to do? And then with staff members, they're the ones in the trenches. They're the ones that are doing it. They need to have say in, I don't like this, this doesn't work, this isn't right for our students. And that be heard and utilized it because they're the experts. They're the ones in the classrooms that are having to pass that down. And then just involving parents and students into those discussions as well, whether it's at parent teacher conferences, whether it's sending out surveys to collect their thoughts and perceptions on how do they view our school district? How do they view the curriculum that we're using or the staff, you know, the school, even the school calendar? How, how is that working? Just everything, asking them for input because the worst thing that they can say is nothing. So we want as much information as possible to make our decisions.
Thank you. I could follow up on that one. At your current school, do you have a specific set of data that you could give us an example of how you use that data to assess curriculum?
So for instance, we implemented our M T S S. It was one of the first things that I did when I took over there. And then that is our tier three intervention, our tier two. And we use the progress assessments, grab that data and like currently, right now, we're looking at it to assess our math curriculum for our interventions. You know, right now we use trans math, but what we're seeing is that the pacing of it makes our students struggle once they get into the tier one classroom. So trying to see if there's anything out there in the data, whether you're using grades or their assessment scores, that it's not lining up with what we want. So now we have to look into other areas that, you know, contacting other schools, what are you guys using? What are ways that we can try and improve this? The other one is, you know, using our star data for English and math to correlate where we are as a district in comparison to the state. And then what are we doing or what have we implemented to show our growth? Okay, how we grew, how did we grow? What did we do differently than when we weren't growing? And using that information to help us make decisions on, do we continue doing this? Or do we gotta look, start looking at alternatives?
When working with people, how would you describe your preferred relationship with them? What values do you appreciate most in a team environment?
Um, when working with people, I'm one of them. You know, if I'm superintendent or if I'm principal or whatnot, talking with my staff members, you know, when, when we're talking and just to a guy, it's JR, you know, and it's not, I don't have in front of students. We can be more official, but I can't do my job without their help, without board members help, without anybody. I don't do this on my own. Nobody does. We need each other in order to do that. And if that's even constructive criticism coming back, I don't, I didn't like that idea that, or that didn't work or whatnot. It's going, it's not personal. It's just difference of opinion or direction, or it just didn't work out like I thought it was. Being able to be approachable and knowing that, okay, if I go and talk to Mr. Wilson, he's not just going to ignore me or in one ear or out the other. He's actually going to listen and he's going to take into consideration. Because part of being a good leader is being a good follower. I don't have to have all the ideas. It doesn't have to be my idea. If it's a good idea and we all want to do it, that's great. And that's great when it comes from your staff because then they buy into it more. Because a lot of the ideas is theirs where, as opposed to if I'm saying, this is what we're doing because I say this is what we're doing. Not going to get anywhere with that. It's not going to be enjoyable.
How do you set goals for yourself and your staff? How do you hold yourself and your staff accountable for student achievement goals while also balancing the demands put on educators?
Going into each position and it's the yearly thing is what do I want to accomplish this year? What, what are, what are the strengths? What are the weaknesses? Where do we need improvement and how am I going to go about doing that? So my goals are always based off of what we need. Okay, okay, we need more, a pop, more positive culture or climate in our school. Okay, that means I've got to work on relationship building with my staff members, getting them upbeat to enjoy their job again. Or it's student performances or cutting down on behavior problems. It's what is it and what is the goal at the end and trying to figure out how to go about getting there? I hold myself accountable by being very particular in ensuring that I'm doing a good job. I'm, before I bring up an idea, I turn it inside out twenty ways. I can see things from both sides to, before I present something, I want to have as many of the answers answered. I don't like going, ah, I don't know, or I, I can't get that, or I'll have to find. It happens, but it shouldn't happen to ninety percent of the questions that are coming up. You should be able to do that because you've researched it, you've looked at the flaws, you've picked it apart, and you're pretty sure that it's, that it's going to work as far as that goes. Keep staff accountable. I know as, as a principal, I'm very visible. I'm in teachers' classrooms continuously and I do one evaluation towards the end of the year. I'll start getting those, but it's a collection and I try, and this is one of my goals. I try and be in each of the classrooms at least twenty-two times. And that's not just for a five minute one, that's for a twenty minute or longer one. Because if a parent calls me up and goes, this going, what's going on in this class? I want to have an idea of what's going on in my school. And I did, I don't want to go, wow, that, that, you'll have to talk to the, as a superintendent, you'll, you'll have to talk to the principals. I'm, I'm not sure. I need to know what's going on in the schools, in both schools to be able to say, yeah, I'm the leader of the district, but I don't know anything that's going on in neither one of my schools as far as that. And then having those difficult conversations with staff members when things aren't going the way that they should. You know, and there's a way, a good way of doing that and not coming off harsh or critical. Because the first thing after having that, that you say is, how can I help you fix this? Not, well, you got to figure this, this thing out. It's no, how can I help you? Because I want you to succeed. I want all my staff members to succeed. My job is trying to make their job as easy as possible so that they can focus in on what they need to do, which is teaching, teaching our kids, not make their life more difficult.
I could follow up on that one. So you talked about how you like to have a good feel of what you're getting into, assess all areas. Don't like to be in that situation where you end up saying, well, I don't know. So tell me, that's great as long as it stays within your locus of control. How do you approach a situation when your assessment of it gets you to the point where you realize, well, I don't know. I don't have the expertise. How do you approach those situations?
You ask for help. I am the type of person that if I'm, and I did it here, that I don't. If I'm lost, the first person I see on the street, I'm going to pull over and say, hey, where's this at? Not try and figure, drive around, drive around. I got confused. I wasn't sure about the time because I thought my clocks would have kicked back an hour just automatically. So I'm like going paranoid, am I here? So the U P S guy was walking into the building across the street from the clinic. And I just pulled over, I go, excuse me, excuse me, what time is it? Because I, I just wanted to make sure. Asking for help, whether it's asking my staff members, hey, struggling with this, do you have any ideas? Contacting other administrators, other school personnel, other districts, sending, you know, our list serves. Just sending out a question, hey, I, I got this issue. Give me some feedback on it. And I know anything you put on there, you're, you're going to get a lot of impact. So it's not thinking that I have to know everything, but if I don't, I have to be willing to ask for help or go and try and search for the answers to get, get that.
What steps will you take to develop trust, high morale, and positive relationships with the school personnel?
Visibility, consistency. I think being around, especially if coming in, being a first year superintendent here, it's getting to know everybody, you know, stopping in the classroom, seeing what teachers are doing, seeing what the other administrators are doing, having conversations with them of, you know, what do you like, what do you don't like, how, you know? What can I do to help things or what changes could be made? Or how, how can we better serve our, our students? You know, getting those ideas and taking those into consideration is just, you know, from a teacher standpoint, all they really want to know is that their voices will be heard and be considered, that administration will listen with the intent of using whatever information is being passed along to be useful information, whether it's good or bad. You can come across there and utilize that information. But if they feel like, nah, he's not, well, he'll stand there and listen, but he's going to forget it soon as he turns around and walks away. That's where the morale starts to go down. That's where things start to get bitter and, you know, a teacher's job and administrator's job is difficult enough that feeling unappreciated at work by your superiors, by your coworkers, just makes it that much more miserable. You know, and we got to try and make it as positive as possible because it's a stressful job by itself. Don't have to try and add things to make it more stressful.
Okay, explain how you encourage and incorporate staff input in planning activities. Provide examples of staff ideas that have been implemented under your leadership.
Coming up with the ideas, the input for planning activities. I'm going to take the activities at, from first standpoint of like a party kind of, you know, excitement buildup type thing. I'm going to pinpoint who my rah rah people are and utilize them to the fullest to that. I'm, when it comes to, well, let's celebrate this, planning it. I, I'm not real, real good at that, but there are always plenty of people in school. At B C N, I had took my business ed teacher and he was, he was that person and hey, here's an idea. How, how do we go about doing that? Oh, well, if we do this. And the first part of it was redoing our homecoming. Because we co-op with Valley City, but trying to make our own school have their own part of homecoming and implementing pep rallies and activities or whatnot. And then building a school flow to put in the parade as far as that goes of just building that. But getting people that if it's a weak point for me, I'm going to find people who are strong at it and strongly encourage them to help me out as much as possible when it comes to those kinds of things. And again, the high morale and developing trust is just being a listener, you know, and being there for them to be able to have, talk about things and feeling like, oh, there's Mr. Wilson in the hallway. I can't approach him. Going, being able to be approached, being able to laugh and joke and not take everything so serious. Because we need to be able to laugh and enjoy our jobs and our time together where, oh, superintendent's here, I, I can't do this. Or the principal's here, can't, no, it's like, and they're in front of the students, yeah, it's formal. But when we're together, it's informal, you know, it's, it's, you should be able to have a good time around each other. I mean, it, it is. I mean, I, I like to have a good time with staff members because guess what? They're the ones who know exactly what we're going through too. So to be able to share some of those common experiences and enlightening atmosphere is fun. And it helps relieve the, the tension of the school day, the school week.
How can a district actively recruit employees and what part of, have, have you played in improvement and recruiting and retention of employees in your previous roles?
You have to be looking out in front to see where potential vacancies could come from. Do you have teachers who are retiring soon, within a few years? And you have to, you have to be proactive in that to be able to find people who can do the job. But that's also noticing other people from other school districts as well. People get coached all the time and they're coached probably because word of mouth got around that they were good at what they do. So knowing that, but then also building relationships with your area colleges and universities to go, hey, how many people are in this program and what do we got? We're going to have a vacancy, you know, and going, how can we steer them to student teach at our school than to entice them? You know, legislature has now made it a little bit easier with being able to pay student teachers and get them going on that standpoint, that'll help. But everybody's competing for the same teachers. You know, it's not the big schools have their pool and the small schools have, no. Everybody's fighting over the same teachers. There's so many vacancies. So how are you going to separate and yourself from everybody else? You know, and it's by starting that early, touching base with the, hey, I know you're only a sophomore in business ed, which was my field. We're, we're going to have a position open in a few years. We'd love if you continue on to come do your student teaching out here. And then while they're doing that, trying to make them feel at home and feel welcomed and that this is a place that they would like to be.
Thank you. What's the most challenging operational issues in school districts today? And how do you approach these challenges?
Operation, I mean, there's a lot and I was just reading the email for the facilities coalition from Rob Black and Jamestown on facility needs of construction of schools. And from that standpoint additions now, you guys have done that. I don't know how much more of that is, if that's, if that's not a need anymore. The other part is just your curriculum, you know, is where, where are we going? Technology wise, how are, what is the important question in education? You know, to me, it comes down to, you know, what the chat G P coming out a year and a half ago and going and changing different things. And we were having this conversation when we were driving around of A I, the importance that, the influence that it's going to play. But it comes down to me is, okay, there's a fundamental question that's facing educators today. Do we want our students to know the information? Is that the first, most important thing? Or do we want our students to know how to find the information to do it? Because if, and we've all done it, don't know how to do something, click on YouTube to how, how, how to change out my garbage disposal. Watch that video. Then we can follow directions, we can follow it step by step. But we can teach those skills of how to do something, follow it step by step. Or no, they, they need to know how to do whatever it is that they're searching for before searching for it. I think that's a huge question that we need to answer and each district themselves figuring out, no, we want our kids to know how to do these things, that's the most important thing. Or we want our kids prepared to know how to find, how to access information to be able to do these kinds of things.
So where do you envision that going? Would, would you think that we'll get so granular as to, as a district to find what things are a know versus what things are a how to know?
I, I, I think it'll start out on, you know, the local preference at first. But I think it's more and more so going to get dictated to of knowing how to find the information, knowing how to locate it, who to talk to, how, how to go about using those things. That's going to be important because again, even if you're out working as alignment, you're not going to have somebody that's going to be able to tell you exactly how to, you get it and how to locate the information that's going to show you or tell you or remind you how to do it. So that's where I see it going from the standpoint now. How quickly it gets there, I, I, I don't know. But I just think with the more invasive that technology is becoming, that we're becoming more dependent on it rather than using it as a complimentary piece. Now it's driving what we're doing. Okay, if the internet goes down, what happens?
What do we do?
Yeah, I, you know, what happens, you know, in the classroom or whatnot when the primary way of reaching the The information isn't there, how, how do we get it? There's the skill of knowing how to go and find the information. When option one is gone. I know how to go and find information.
Tell us how you would guide a school district in developing a budget, specifically how a district should determine its priorities. And accounting for unanticipated expenditures. What level of improvement should principals and other administrative staff have in the process?
In developing a budget, I mean, referencing the prior budgets and what the future goals are of the district. What are we looking at implementing? What are we changing? What is that process? And then looking at it from a number standpoint of, okay, these are the things that we'd like to do. But here's what we have available to us to do what we would like to do, while we can't do it all. Then it comes down to determining what are necessities and what are luxuries. Once we have all the necessities in place, then we use whatever information, whatever money that we have to go, okay. What else can we do with this? What, you know, in future planning, okay, we have these projects coming up. How do we, how do we balance the two, you know, and? A lot of that comes down to saying no to things and being able to justify it, or when you say yes to things. Being able to point to the numbers of going, yep, we can do this, or no, we can't do this. That means working very closely with your business manager. You know, of going, hey, here's some of the things that we like to do, whatnot. Nope, we, we don't have that, or it'll be tight, but here, here's some things or whatnot. Bringing in outside sources to help facilitate tricky, tricky areas, alternative areas. I mean, one of the things that we're going through, and I don't know if you guys are going through it, is the transition loss. That is impacting us a great deal, you know. As far as trying to figure out where we gotta make cuts, what is absolutely necessary and not necessary. From a staffing standpoint, that's when you gotta look to your administrative team and go, okay. Here's what we're, where we're at, what is absolutely necessary and what isn't. And before adding things, is it sustainable? You know, one of the couple of things that we had to do was turn away from a couple of grants that we were looking at applying for. But we wouldn't have been able to sustain them. So yeah, it'd been nice to have these things for three years, but then after that, it's gone. Because we're not gonna be able to fit it into our budget to take over the cost of all those and. The employee that might, that would have had to been retained to continue that. So it's looking at that forefront of going, okay, how do we do this? Here, here's a five year plan. What we got coming down the pipeline and looking at your future enrollment projections and going. Okay, we're gonna increase or we're gonna decrease. So with the decrease in enrollments, how is that gonna impact us budgetarily? And as a result, will we have to lose something or will we be able to maintain what we have currently?
So follow up that, you said transition loss, what did you mean by that? Are you, are you losing students in your?
No, our transition money. So what we lost. This started three years ago, we lost one point nine million dollars. And we had to account for, this is the first year, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less each year. We were one of the highest amounts and there weren't a lot of schools. And we were referenced quite a bit because the issue that they had with us. Is how we were making our bond payment. And, and having that excess money, so we, we gotta figure out how to. Get to that number, whether it's not rehiring staff that retire, making other cuts. As we can, but I mean, the good thing about it is in thirty, twenty thirty two. Our billings paid up, so this will run us through twenty twenty eight, this issue. So it'd be bad to cut staff, but then four years later, start to be able to add staff again and just. So we gotta, and it's a district that's been used to having yeses said to a lot of things, now we gotta start saying no.
How would you ensure the school board is informed on important decisions?
Continuous communication, a weekly agenda, weekly newsletter sent out. To the board members stating, this is what we got going, here are important legislation. That's gonna be talked about on this date or this time, you know, of giving out that information of what's coming. Oh, here's a senate bill that's being looked at. We might wanna reach out to our representatives and either speak for or speak out against it. By keeping the school board informed of everything that's taking place. Of my schedule, where I'm gonna be, the things that I'm doing, if you need to contact me as far as that goes. But all the things that we're doing in the school building, whether it's in a newsletter form, and I don't know what you guys have. Of just here, here's an update of what, what's going on and what I'm looking at and. All your committee meetings of sending out the information, getting the information that they may need. To make whatever decisions have to be made to them in a timely manner, you know, so that they can look at it. And if they have any questions, get back, find out the information to that and then go from there as far as that goes. But just continually updating the board on what's going on in the school so that. They don't hear from a patron before they hear from me. Cause then it looks like we don't have very good communication.
What do you see as the difference between career technical programs and college readiness programs?
The difference that I see is most high schools are set up for college readiness. That's what most of your traditional high schools are set up for. I think we need to reconsider reemphasizing. The career technical. Route, because a lot of those positions are the available positions. And nobody's out there filling those positions. So if we want our students to have success right out of school. We have, I mean, your small farming agricultural community, having students that leave here, being able to step into those kind of positions. Right away and have a sense of knowing what they're doing, it's gonna make them more successful. It's gonna keep them here too. You know, as far as preparing our kids to go to college. Well, more and more of that is turning into taking online classes and. Attending virtually at the universities and whatnot and. A lot of companies, a lot of businesses are tailoring their preference towards. People coming straight out of high school, rather than getting them after they've kind of been trained in a certain way, but we do it completely different. Now we gotta untrain them to get them to preferably train them in on, on their style. So trying to get some of those, I know when I was in Arizona. And the C T E, we had Walmart, Costco. Target or whatnot come in and give us their tills and things of that nature. To let our students get familiar and learn how to do those because a lot of our kids, that, those were things that they were doing. So we were able to get that stuff, but it's preparing our kids for what they were actually going out there and doing. So that's where we need to really emphasize and make available the C T E pathways. You know, it, it's, it's important and there's a lot of, I mean, you look at all the trades. They're hurting, they're hurting for workers, and if you can get students that have somewhat of a good work ethic. They're gonna be able to write their own, write their own checks, I mean, and be highly valued.
So I got a question on that. So coming from a small district and being a small district. How do you see being able to get the right equipment, the right? Information and curriculum and all that stuff to be able to teach that stuff?
Yep, so, and it's all well and good or whatnot, but the difficult part is finding people that can teach it. You know, but to find out what you wanna add, you have to go and talk to your community members, the business owners. You have to go and talk to the industry leaders in your communities and go. What's lacking from the employees that are coming? What do they need to know? What do they need to be trained in, you know, and we've done that and. Like, from an academic standpoint of in the classroom, the soft skills, that's one of the things that they stress a lot is like. These kids that are coming out of school don't have a lot of those kind of skills, you know. The resumes that they turn in are, are awful, they're, they're not, they, they don't know how to do it. Whatnot, teaching those how to be in an interview, how to. Yeah, it might not be the normal way you dress, but you don't come in wearing a pair of sweats or whatnot. You present yourself like you want that job, whatever it is that you present in, it's those kind of things. But finding out, talking to them, you know, whenever it's going on, the building, the industries, going to those. Shows and just talking with them, going, where, where do you guys see, where, where are our shortcomings? And then bringing that information back and going, how can we incorporate this into our students? What do we have that we have right now that we started utilizing to build on? The awareness in the industries and how can they help, okay? They're not just gonna help, help, you're gonna also have to show them how it's going to benefit them. You know, if we give you these resources, how's that gonna benefit us? While we're potentially gonna provide you with future employees, people that are gonna come in, familiar with your stuff. And set up, you know, mentorships, job shadows, things of that nature in those districts or in those fields.
Oh, one more. So you said that intuitive statement, you said, most high schools are set up for a college ready. But then you also mentioned that except college, it's changing so much to the online virtual. So do you share that most high schools are doing well and preparing for the online virtual? And if so, how? If not, what would you do?
It depends on how. How much you're, you're doing that. I think like at B C N, I think we have a high tendency of students that are taking. Online courses, whether it's from colleges as part of being dual credit or through N D C D E. We have a lot of kids that are doing that, so going through that process, that's getting them, that's gonna. Prepare them for college when they have to do that, and we have lots of kids in the last few years, we have. I'd probably say ninety percent of our college students, they're fully online. That they haven't been doing in person, you know, and the programs and yet the universities are making that more readily available. Because their enrollment numbers are dropping, they gotta figure out a way to increase those numbers, so that's one way that, that they do that. But yeah, it, it is. I got sidetracked.
No, I was just curious if you. Did, have you, what would you do to help encourage or build that if you see a lack of preparation within the college ready? To be able for our students to handle the, the virtual classes?
Uh, that's just talking to your universities and how they're, how they're guiding things, what they're doing and then to prepare the students, you know. I, I mean, if you got kids that aren't taking the A C T tests and they're getting into the schools. But they didn't take algebra two, they didn't score, and then they have to take, you know, what I used to call a zero class. To be able to then get into that college algebra class, but you gotta pay for it, but you don't get any credit for it. Of figuring out how to prevent that from happening, you know, as far as the courses that you're offering, the things that you're doing. From that standpoint. And then just checking the integrity of your online. Application of how you're conducting your online courses, you know, the prevalence to cheating. Is, is there, you know, so how are you safeguarding that as far as, you know, testing and where they're located? Things of that nature, cause I know in my experience, I've gotten quite a few of the emails stating, uh, this was plagiarized. Whatnot and reset and here's our plagiarism policy and code of conduct as far as that goes. And just monitoring that and being able to fill those holes on, here's how we ensure the. Integrity of how we're doing it.
Describe how you communicate and engage with students.
I love students. Just personal, I find things that they like, that they're interested in and start conversations with them. Or you see some, hey, that's not, you know, try and find as many ways to talk to them. About non-school things, because then they see you as a person and not just, oh, the principal or the superintendent. And finding ways to make them laugh and joke and then they don't feel apprehensive when you're in their vicinity. They can come up and say, hey, Mr. Wilson, here, here's, here's a, here's a funny joke, uh, school appropriate, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But seeking you out, seeking you out where as, unfortunately, as a principal, most time you're spent up. Seeking out students for things or whatnot because of discipline issues or whatnot, but. Talking even to those students that are discipline problems. Having conversations with them without it being, uh, because you got sent to me, we're, we're gonna have a talk, no. Getting them, you know, of getting them, but also them realizing that you will listen to them and hear their side as well. And at times believe them. And side on theirs that they might not agree with the decision that's being made, but they understand why. I believe in making them be able to see the other side, why the teacher reacted this way or the other student did. As far as why you're here talking with me as far as that goes, but yeah, making them laugh, feeling them. I was always a big person on working the lunches. Because then that gave me lots of opportunities to interact with the kids when they're eating lunch and having that time of being able to laugh. Joe, okay, did you watch this? Hey, what are you, what are you doing? Or that's the only time that we allow them to be on their phones. Is during the lunchtime and seeing a video or them showing me something or coming up and saying, hey, well, let me see that. Or did you watch this or any of that stuff, but just making it, making yourself feel approachable. That's, that's, and that's for staff, students, everybody is that, yeah, I can walk up and I can give them a little bit of a hard time and. Be funny, ha, ha, you know, I'm not too, everything's too serious.
What is your idea of positive district culture? What actions will you take to build or improve the culture in our district and inspire trust in the community?
Uh, my idea of positive district culture. And I guess I'll take this from first the, a staff perspective. Is that if you have a district wide staff meeting, that. Well, there's your elementary, there's your secondary, and there's no, there's no commingling or whatnot. That, yeah, they come and they, they, they'll sit and they'll talk with other groups, you know, not just. Clicks, cause even as adults, we get around those people that we're comfortable with and we always gravitate to there, but to try and have activities or whatnot that. Mix that up to get everybody to feel like we're one, where if our staff don't feel like we're one, we're gonna have a hard time convincing it. Anybody else that we are. Uh, actions to take, um, the first thing that I, that I would be doing is just having conversations, you know, and. I had a few of those with staff members during the tours or whatnot of, hey, what's this like, how is this? You know, what would you change, what, what are you looking for from this position of superintendent, how, how do you want those? Taking that information in, you know, and understanding where it's coming from and then looking at trying to find. Ways to correct it or enhance it, if it's something that's happening that's good, how do we get more of that as far as that goes? Again, building a trust in the community. You have to be out there in order to be trusted, you have, you have to be a part of the community. Can't just come in and check in and check out once I'm, my day's over, I'm done. If you want people to trust that you care about their community, because that's the most important thing. You have to show that you value those communities, that it means something to you. And that's through actions, not through words, that's through actions, it's easy to say something. But it's harder to do it because guess what, it takes your time. Your personal time that you can use for whatever you want, but you're choosing to be out and visible. And unfortunately, when you're in the field of education, when you walk out on that street. You're still the teacher, you're still the principal, you're still the superintendent. No matter what the event is, people are gonna come up and talk to you about certain things and it's gotta make them feel like they're important and. That the information that they're sharing with you is valued. Otherwise, you're not gonna have the trust of that person.
I'm gonna follow up on that one, another intuitive statement you made, um, on building unity. You said, well, if I saw that, I'd do some activities that mix it up, can you give us a specific example of some type of activity you've seen that'll help build that unity?
Um, well, so we, we had that in, uh, in Jamestown, we have, uh. Business that has axe throwing, that has, uh, uh, modified gun crowded, still shooting at the screen or even golf simulator or whatnot. And we took the staff to it and had, uh, the first time it was come if you want and we had about half and it was fun. Second time we did it, we, we took everybody and, you know, it was after school hours and whatnot, so, you know. And they sold, they sold beverages and, and having a good time, but. Just having that kind of an atmosphere or an experience along and just, uh. Enjoying it outside of school, outside of the teacher workroom or. Our prep time when we can talk because during those times, it's usually still talking about school, having the stresses. And even in that atmosphere, some of the conversations, but you're having fun, you're with the people that are going through the struggles that you're going through. And you're having a good time, um, one of the other ones that we're looking at is, uh, National Guard allows. People to come in and go through their obstacle courses. So we're looking at, uh, how do we go about getting that and we got a lot of staff members who are interested and wanting to do that because. You see it on TV, so it's finding activities like that, that it's not work-related and we're still together and we're having fun. It looks scared down there.
What are the most important first steps a superintendent should take in a new district?
Um, I, the first thing is have a conversation with the business manager. And discussing everything financially that, that is going on, what are issues as far as that goes with, with the budget. Then the second thing is reading and going through all the board policies. And getting an understanding of what's all in place as far as that goes. And then having a meeting, whether it's before reading the policies or whatnot with the board president of. Having a conversation of clearly defining expectations, what, what are the important? Agenda items that I need to focus in on, that I need to target, that here are the things that the board is looking at and. Outlining the process for which we're gonna do, what the expectations for me are as far as. Governing the, the district, so I think those three things are hugely important coming into it because I think those are the quickest ways of. Getting yourself familiar with what the district is facing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, brings us to, do you have any questions for us?
Uh, well, I mean, it would go into the conversation is like. What is the, what is the biggest hope for the next superintendent?
Good question. I would say, you know, obviously, um, student first, longevity, um, consistency. I think those are probably by. Things I think, you know, are, are a big focus.
I, I think I would, we wanna keep also putting, putting, keeping that focus on student achievement and, and making sure that we're turning out students that are. You know, that are high achievers, you know, and looking at the test scores, looking at the data, I mean, you know, we've already started some of that already. Looking at math and reading programs, but yeah, the focus on student achievement, I think is somewhere to look at a little more.
I think another priority is staff retention, you know, you mentioned it as part of the challenges with several districts, but. Our, for our district, I think we've got great staff and we probably have a lot, potentially a lot to lose if we're not careful to, to, to work towards that, so.
Yeah, and again, you know, legislation has put in the ability to have retention, you know. Incentives financially as far as that goes and then even recruiting as far as that goes as well, but yeah. But that, the retention comes in, having those conversations with those teachers and, you know. What can we do to keep you, what, what can we, how, how can things change or do things need to change, I mean, sometimes. That can fix it, other times it's, well, it's just a life change, you know, with those you can't, there's not much you can do about those. And then the consistency part, yeah, you know, that's, a- as a principal and the two principals can attest to this too. That's what students are looking for from us is consistency, that you're gonna rule the same way for this student and that student. Doesn't matter who they are, whether they are, that a no to me is a no to them and a no to them and I try and get that across to the teachers that. You gotta be consistent, if you say no, it's no every time, if you start to say yes here or there, well, you let that one go, but you won't let me go, why? So, and that's the same way with, you know, staff members as well as. As long as you're consistent in how you do things, how you communicate things, okay, I might not agree with it. But that's par for the course with you, so, yeah, I mean, consistency is huge. How about the four in the back?
So we got elementary teachers.
Yeah.
Are you asking what is our hope?
Yep, yep.
Meeting the learning needs of all students, the kids in the bottom tier, the kids in the high tier, elementary kids, high school kids. Like meeting the needs of all of them where they're at, focusing on room for all of them, that's what I would think.
Good, um. I, I guess the only other question I, I got then is, uh, how? I guess, how is the district leadership set up? Is there a district leadership team, is there an admin team, how, how is? Is there any of that?
Uh, beyond your, your normal, you know, school boards, superintendent, principals, um. Miss Diaz has some leadership teams in the high school level, right?
We have multiple leadership teams, we have strategic teams that include staff from both schools. They do the strategic planning with the admin and do the guidance of what's needed in the future, we have an innovation team with different staff members every year. We don't pick them, they choose themselves to go, um, admin has been going for, this is our third year or fourth year. Fourth year, and so they focus on what is needed for the district for professional development and then we have a whole bunch of smaller teams like survey teams. Data teams that take care of lots of different things and they lead it. We're always there, but they lead it.
When did you guys last do your strategic plan?
Our strategic, strategic plan was updated, um, April of last year and then fall of this year. Just where our progress has, we're up to review where we're at now, so like, um, beginning of April again. And then that information along with the title report is sent out for May, but we would like to host more, um, community men, mem. Meetings where people could come in and see it, in the past, we haven't had really good attendance, but we always have good questions after we send out information, like I'll get phone calls and stuff. But it would be really nice to have more community meetings.
So on that strategic plan team, were there? Admin, obviously, were there teachers, were there board members, were there parents?
In the past, we've had board members and parents, last year was not, but we had two administrators leave. But in the past, we've had people from the business, um, we've had people from the bank, drug store, um, um, other community members, other board members. I think Dwayne served on some of them, I think Shannon's been on some of them.
So all the questions I have.
We do have copies if you wanna see that.
All right, anything else, any questions, comments, all right. Okay, well, thank you for that, I'm gonna answer the questions, I know it's a little bit grueling and I feel like you're in the hot seat, but. So, uh, see, if you don't have any more questions, uh, thank you for your interest in our district. Uh, we'll be making this, a decision after this round of interviews, which I think you were the, the last person, uh, hopefully early next week, I think is what we're, we're gonna be discussing next steps here, I don't know if that's so. So, we'll, uh, notify your status at that time and then answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think that's all that we have. Not have any more tours or anything else for you.
Actually, you wanted to see the offices, but someone from the front office was gonna actually take you on and if not, I will.
Oh, okay.
Right here.
Great to meet you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, see ya. Yeah, thanks for coming, making the travel and, yeah, safe travels on your way back. Next steps, I guess, um. You know, how we wanna proceed, how we wanna, you know, make decisions, do you wanna, you know, take some time and, you know. Talk to the people that have, that have met these candidates, do you wanna, you know, talk at all about any second interviews, you know, I, I guess, we wanna compile scores. Scoring sheet, uh, you know, going at the table here has one. Any other questions on that other than on the interview portion of it, you know, Alexis just said basically take your, your interview scores. Divide by ten and, and then add another point and a half for your own observation in the, in the interview for that part of it. You guys, I guess all good with that or are there any questions, I guess, on going over the score sheet? And then, I'm, I'm thinking that we wanna. Have a time where we turn these in, whether it's tomorrow or Monday and, and have to compile them. Just to. I don't know, compile scores of each candidate or how we wanna. Just this year, you want to, I think just this one, well, hang on to your interview sheets too, because Alexis says that everything that we do it right on. Uh, it's technically need to be saved for records retention.
Nobody's gonna be able to read mine anyway. I write like their kids.
I mean, I mean, so, yeah, I don't, I don't give a shit with you.
Actually, they probably make better.
Yeah, we're supposed to turn them in eventually, so, um. In my mind, there's two ways to compile these, you know, I mean, we'll all, we'll all turn them in then, ever. You can do it by total points per candidate or you can do it by top picks per candidate. I suppose, right, basically a one or a zero for, for everyone that gets a top pick. And I, it's up to you guys, or, I mean, the total points is certainly straightforward and it's, you know.
But we're not gonna necessarily say this is our person based off of.
It's up to us.
The score, you know what I'm saying, like.
It's, it's a tool.
Right.
I mean, I, that's how I feel about it.
Right, that's what I think too.
It's a tool, but I think it's a good tool, um, to have more input, you know, so that will be input from our principals and business manager too.
I think we should try to figure out something to. Get information from the people that had a chance to do the meet rates and whatever else, um, whether it's a, uh, email that goes out saying. Questions, concerns, comments by Tuesday at five, whatever, we, we need to set a, a hard line. Because to me, if we don't, the meet rates are pointless if we don't gather the information from the people that got to meet up.
Tried to get it out of Ralph, but he wouldn't.
Well, maybe we can include him on the email, but, and then.
You know, that's a good idea.
Whether it's responding back, um, to a board member via email, phone call, meet face-to-face, whatever they're most comfortable with. I wouldn't say reply as a group, I, I would say individually, um, reply to a board member, multiple board members, however, anybody's comfortable doing it. That way it is, uh, you know, there's purpose behind the meetings and that kinda stuff.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, does an email work? I mean, what are you thinking, or is that something we could send out an email, you know?
Who's on that team?
Basically an email to.
Meet and read.
What's that, it was all staff, right?
Yeah, everybody had the opportunity to go, yeah.
Yeah, but if you just send an email onto all staff that said, hey, we, we'd like your feedback by Monday afternoon.
Yeah, I, I just picked Tuesday for a date.
Monday afternoon, um, if you're more comfortable calling or talking to board members, list their phone numbers. Just so there's that time given for feedback, okay, like you say, otherwise maybe that was pointless anyway. I mean, it was nice for the candidate, so, I mean, I think it was a very welcoming thing that we did. Showing up all schools, giving good tours, basically having the hosts like, you know, like Ralph to drive them around. Yeah, I mean, it was, that was a very good. I, I'd say welcoming thing for, for the people that came here and made the effort to come and visit us and interview. But you guys agree with that, just an, an email for, for feedback, but then. You guys agree with that, just an, an email for, for feedback, but then, who does the feedback go to? I mean, they can, they can call us, but if they wanna email back, should it just email back to, to Amber?
I would say it depends who they're, they're most comfortable with, if they're comfortable emailing you or you interview me or principals or whoever.
Put the information, call, call a board member, email a board member, but no group responses.
Yeah, but let's have Amber compile.
Yeah.
Yeah, we sort of turn all that information into her, you, or whatever.
If you get, if you get emails, you can compile emails, and then you can shoot them out to us, but we just can't reply and cross talk.
To everybody, yeah.
Now, you started mentioning the score sheet, and then with that, you mentioned administrative, um, input on it, so, do you intend to have the administrators as well score and that compiled as part of it, or?
I think so, yeah, what do you guys think, I mean, we've all, everybody here at the table has a, has a score sheet and has had the interview scores.
I would like to at least keep the board scores and administrative scores separate to see the difference.
So do, uh, do you wanna see a combined?
Combine the five board members and then scores of the, I guess, just two administrators.
And our business manager. So you're gonna see three scores, board, admin, total. Does that, does that sound? What's, what's a couple of our spreadsheets, Amber? Yeah, I, I mean, I'm good, however you wanna see the information, I, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's there for, you know, I mean, you collect the data, let's, let's use it as best we can.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, well, what deadline should we put on ourselves to get these turned in for that, should we have these in Monday morning?
I think so. I think Monday morning is good, gives us the weekend. No, we were not trying to rush to it tomorrow.
Yeah.
You or Amber?
Amber. You guys have the ability to scan and email them in there. Scan it with your phone, email?
Drop them off, cause I'm sure my kids will forget something.
It hasn't been that badly. I'm trying to think back how long, basketball season.
Here last week.
Oh, I missed it.
Do we, as part of the purchase of the school board association assistance, do we get another time with Alexis on reviewing the candidates?
Do you remember Dwayne, what they normally do, or is she like, you're on your own by, by now?
I don't remember if we ever did that, I don't. I'm sure she would be more than going to speak with us.
She'll come out as many times as she wanted.
I'm pretty sure she will.
Do we wanna set a date for that of a, a board review with Alexis?
You wanna pick a date, what do you wanna do?
What would you hope to gather from that, just out of curiosity?
I, I'd like to understand more about really superintendent, the, the different candidates, how she came up with some of her scores here. I think it would be a good, uh, session for us as a board, a good working session to go through, um, it's my hope that we.
I was just gonna say, I hope we don't have to do this again.
Right, yeah, I'm hoping we get a superintendent candidate that's long lasting, um, I'm not sure just out of interviews if all of the questions that I've got have been answered, so, anyway, I just think that that session would be good for us as a board to, to work through.
I, I did, um, send a, a quick text to Alexis today, asking her what the rules or if there's any special rules for a second interview, you know, and what, what that looks like. Uh, she basically responded saying, um, kinda the same rules apply as, as for the first, uh, if you have more than one candidate come back for a second interview, you have to ask the same questions to both, um, there, how else did she say that? There wasn't much difference. You can, you can advance as many or as few candidates as you wish to a second round. But second round allowed, second round is allowed, same rules apply as a first regarding open meetings, having to ask same questions to all candidates if there are multiple, et cetera. But no different rules because it is a second round.
The other piece that I think we could gain from having Alexis with, it's just learning, but also the, uh, the contract itself. What tools we have available for offering a, some variability within the contract, mostly accountability, perhaps, perhaps retention type or a progressive. Why is it?
It's pretty much set by law.
I know I've seen superintendent contracts that have a progressive bonus structure, if you will, for certain, um. So for, uh, if you can agree upon some type of key indicators that trigger it. Trying to get creative there to encourage some results. But dare I say that we probably need either Alexis or, or the school attorney here to explore some of those options.
Uh, on a con- on contract writing, you could, you could put in what you want and, and send it to the school attorney, I think you can do that by phone or email. Without bringing them out here, but, what do you have, whatever, what do you guys, whatever you wanna do, like you say, do we wanna meet again by next Tuesday or maybe Wednesday, since Wednesday's kind of our normal meeting days? You know, gather and compile our score sheets and, and any comments or information from the public, and then we need to reconvene at some point and decide who, who we want to advance to the, you know, next round, or if we, someone's ready to pick, or whatever, you can do that too, but.
I think we give her, Amber at least, till Wednesday, just cause that's, might be a lot of stuff to compile.
I guess if you're only giving, if you're giving people till Monday afternoon, I mean, that would, I mean, if you wanna have a meeting Tuesday, then I'd have to try to do everything on Tuesday.
Yeah, I think Wednesday, I think Wednesday.
There is one meet Wednesday evening at our normal time, six o'clock.
Can we do a remote link for me, please? You won't be here.
I won't be in North Dakota.
What time works?
You're gonna be on East Coast.
Okay, so you're two hours.
Yeah, so six o'clock.
Yeah, oh, that'd be funny, yeah.
I mean, if we did our normal six o'clock, that'd be eight.
Yeah, that would be free.
Absolutely. Cause we could put you on the.
Yeah, appreciate it.
On the big screen. What do we want for our agenda, what should our agenda be on that meeting?
I think we're compiling scores, uh, information from staff that submitted anything, um.
I mean, I think we, do we wanna invite open discussion from public or staff that evening? Open commentary period, that was something that was talked about. Alexis says an option as long as we do the proper notifications, right, so.
I have compile scores. Review comments.
Do we wanna structure that at all, is it something where we want to buy a notification that, hey, like, come, share or just leave it open?
I think you, you know, allot a certain amount of time per person and, um, kinda go from there, I don't know if there's really.
I mean, it's not like we're a big board or a huge room, where you're gonna have to have a microphone and that, I don't think.
But, cause I think if you let one person talk, um, you have, so you can't limit the amount of time you're gonna allow people, you know, say, we've got thirty minutes for people to talk. I think if you've got, you say, okay, you can have three minutes, whatever it happens to be. And whoever wants to talk for three minutes, everybody gets the opportunity, whether there's twenty people or there's two people, um, so it could be quick or it could be long, but as long as everybody that wants the opportunity to be heard gets heard, I don't think that part of it matters.
Do you wanna do that? That's, it's fine, I, I didn't see a lot, a lot of people on the meet and greets, I don't know what it was like in Taylor.
So I can't imagine we'll have a big group. Would you guys see?
We've got a base group.
You were only there for five minutes because, like, we had coverage for the room, so half the teachers weren't in for five minutes.
We're playing magical classrooms.
Yeah. For some reason, we couldn't leave them to their own devices, so, so I don't know who was there for any, other than the five minutes I was in there.
I thought you just threw them all over the gym and locked the doors and everybody could go to their meet and greet.
They'd probably be, they'd probably get a lot of learning in. On social, right?
Okay, so agenda item, um, allow public comment on candidates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that. Do you been using it to submit a comment or show it?
Okay, I, I mean, I'm good with that, otherwise, I could say it, it seems like it was all for nothing.
Right, and I would say, I, I mean, what's a good number to say time wise limiting a person, cause you need to, otherwise, you could have one person that wants to go on and ramble for hours, and you could have somebody that wants to just come up and say.
Like two to three minutes.
One that comes up and says, Bob's the guy.
Right, yeah.
Two to three minutes, or two point five.
Two minutes and forty seven seconds. Let's say three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. And as far as Alexis goes, I don't, I don't know, I could check with her, what her inability is, uh, for Wednesday, or we can do this meeting and then, and then have another meeting that, that we would possibly have her at.
When do you get back, when do you get back from?
The evening of the twenty nine, pretty late.
So that's Thursday night.
Yeah, it's Thursday night. So March first, I could join in on something, that next week I can.
What did you say? You're back.
I'm back the twenty ninth, so March first, the Friday of next week, I can be available.
I'm not available on March.
March, that Friday, yeah, so I can put you in the following week, but.
I mean, we're already into Wednesday for our meeting, so, you know, we can look at that following week, whether it be the.
We gotta be careful how far out we do go though, cause we don't wanna lose one of these candidates either, so. On Wed- Wednesday's meeting, you may get to a point where we've eliminated, well, I was gonna say one or two, but if you eliminate two, you're done. Or you've eliminated a person.
Well, somebody reach out to Alexis and see if one of those first days of that week of the fourth through the eighth is, if she's available.
I will reach out to her and, and ask her, I'll also ask her her thoughts on, on, you know, on next steps to her, or what she feels, you know, might be necessary for, so, she might say, you guys are crazy, you're on your own, figure it out, but we'll see.
I'd prefer it be the beginning of the week. Cause I start counting. I'm sure by the end of the week, to the end of the week, we'll be calling it all bar.
You said you could possibly meet that Friday the first.
Yeah.
Oh, I know you guys forgot that's right.
What's that?
I'm gonna be back by Monday.
So on day like the, on Friday night, we have a fish fry, Friday, so Monday night would be.
Okay, yeah, yeah, Monday is fun.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, the earlier that following week would be better. That would be March fourth. March fourth meeting worked for everybody if that's what we end up doing for another meeting.
Is it you guys' sixth? Oh, second, sixth, okay. I know Gabe's the fifth, but I didn't know if it was the first or the second.
Anything else you guys would like to see on, on, on next steps here as far as, I mean, I think we're, I think we're trying to do a pretty good job here gathering information, like, information, comments.
Is Amber gonna talk to the candidates, cause you guys told all three that you were looking at early next week? Does she need to, or does someone need to?
Oh, yes, and we said, that we know early next week, but now we're not having a meeting until Wednesday, so, reach out to each one and, and let them know that we're having a meeting Wednesday, and there will be information after that.
Wednesday's still early.
What's that?
Wednesday's still early.
Oh, yeah, I, sure, but, early week, but, but you won't, but you won't talk to them until Thursday, so.
If you decide anything Wednesday, you'd wanna let them know first and Thursday morning, or we might not have anything decided Wednesday, then you could, then you could call them.
I, I'm gonna deal with that, I guess.
It probably wouldn't be bad to reach out and let them know we're having a meeting Wednesday.
Do you have, um, I assume you've got emails, phone numbers? Let them know.
I just don't want someone to think, oh, they're not calling.
Right.
Right, yeah, yeah, that, that.
I think the same thing.
Sure, that's a quick email, whatever, it just says, board will meet to decide on Wednesday, or to make a decision Wednesday, don't know what it is yet.
We're not sure, we may decide to have another meeting, but we're gonna make a decision.
Yeah, like you said, I, I don't wanna rush the process, but yet, I don't wanna, you know, of course, we can't let it drag on too long, we can't lose people, so. Okay, then we will adjourn.